Business, um, tab three B, approval of minutes. Josh, you wanted to take the first one?
Uh, Jean, uh, I don't have any issues. Can you make that motion?
Uh, no, he wasn't here. I can make the motion. I can make the motion for you. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the February sixth, two thousand twenty executive session meeting minutes.
Seconded.
It's seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, just you and I will be voting on this, Josh?
Josh and I.
Mark Cullen and I. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the March fifth, two thousand twenty meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Josh and I.
Mark Cullen and I. I move that, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the June tenth, two thousand twenty meet, meeting minutes.
Seconded.
It's seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Josh and I.
Mark Cullen and I. The next item on the agenda under three C is the approval of an event request for Lynn YMCA five K charity run on October twelfth, um, two thousand twenty, starting at, um, eight thirty AM. And it'll be subject to the COVID nineteen reopening guidelines.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the five K charity on October twelfth, starting at eight thirty. This event's actual occurrence is contingent on the COVID nineteen reopening guidelines.
It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
This item came to us, this is an annual race. It actually happens in May, usually typically, but has been delayed due to COVID guidelines. And they have scheduled for this alternative date in October. Hopefully, they'll be able to run the race at that point.
Okay, this typically takes, takes place at Lowlands? It starts, uh?
I think so. Yeah, I believe so, right on the hot road.
Okay, we'll have more information. So, it's been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
I.
Jean Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I. Next subject under three D is the approval, approve the revised event request for a congressional debate hosted by the Nahat Democratic Town Committee on August second, two thousand twenty, um, at Town Hall from eight AM to two PM. This was originally approved for August fifth, two thousand twenty, at five PM. So, this has been changed. This is under three D.
More susceptible to approve the revised event request for the press release date on this, bus hasn't moved from August fifth, two thousand twenty, and five P M.
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Josh and I.
Jean Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I. Under tab three E, um, what do we have here? We have a memorandum of agreement, uh, for the terms of fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-three, uh, with a, with the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters' union. Um, could I have a motion on this, Jean?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Nahat Firefighters' Union memorandum of agreement for the three fiscal years of two thousand twenty through, through two thousand twenty-three, and the one fiscal year of two thousand nineteen.
Actually, I'm sorry, I have that, I wrote that wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's actually the three fiscal years of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, and then the one fiscal year of two thousand twenty. Okay? Do you mind re, rewrite, redoing it?
So, for the fiscal years of twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three and two thousand twenty?
Is there a second on the motion?
Seconded.
It's seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Tony, could you fill us in, please?
Yes. So, last, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, we handled a similar business with the police union. Tonight, we are handling, uh, the fire union, and I hope at the next meeting, we'll be handling the DPW slash clerical union. This is, the first MOA is for fiscal year, uh, that we are closing as of yesterday, which is a zero percent, um, increase. And then, the next three years is a two, three, three. So, again, as I mentioned last year, the negotiations that we've been having with the unions over the past few years have, uh, really got stalled due to coronavirus, and, and a lot because of the uncertainty of, um, closing out the, this most recent fiscal year, and how we're gonna handle next fiscal year with revenues, uncertainty of revenues. This agreement basically symbolizes, um, a positive, positive, most positive end for the town in the first two years, and then positive end for the union, really, on the, on the second two years. Uh, so, we're able to, by doing a zero percent for the last fiscal year, we're actually able to save some money that was previously approved at last year's town meeting, which helps us prevent ending this current fiscal year in a deficit, and save some money going into next year, and then provide that, um, that necessary, um, additional increase to the unions in the following two, second and third year. You know, I really appreciate everything that the fire union, same like the police and DPW, uh, for the patience that they've had with me and, um, council, putting this together, and their ability to negotiate with the town, and this is a win-win for both parties.
Thank you, Tony. Any further discussion on the motion? Jean?
I move that the Board of, we did this.
Yeah, we, is any further discussion on it? Do you have any comment?
Oh, just that, um, I think we, we discussed this briefly with the police contract. You know, they've worked with us on this, and I think that we work with them in, in kind, and, uh, we got two great departments there.
Again, yes, and I, and just again, to repeat, so, they went, um, over the, for the five-year term, starting two years ago, and ending two years from now. They're going one percent, zero percent, two percent, three percent, three percent. So, over the last couple of years now, um, they've really picked up their end to help the town fiscally.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Josh, any comments, please?
Uh.
Okay. Um, all I have to say is, I know how difficult some of these negotiations can be, be, Tony, and they take up a lot of time, particularly during all the things that you've been going through over the last couple of months, and not only you, but the fire department and the police department have been going through. So, I appreciate you, um, both groups getting together and, um, and, and ironing this out. So, I appreciate it. If there's no more, uh, discussion on the motion, could we have a vote?
Josh and I.
Jean Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I. Next on the agenda, under three G, uh, is the appointment of Molly Conlin to temporarily serve on the Board of Registars for the purposes of the petition, Board of Selectmen election recount. Obviously, Jean, I'll probably ask you to abstain from this vote. Um, Josh, do I have a motion?
Yes. Uh, if it was Board of Selectmen vote to make Molly Conlin temporarily serve on the Board of Registars members, Board of Selectmen election recount.
Uh, is it seconded? Seconded by Mark Cullen. Any, uh, discussion on the motion?
Um, Molly was the third member of the Board of Registars up until, uh, the beginning of this calendar year, when she had resigned, and through the process, uh, by the, by law, the Republican Party has to select a new member to fill that seat. Um, they were having difficulty finding one, 'cause of this all, again, happened during, while coronavirus was really, um, picking up.
You're talking about finding a Republican or?
Yeah. And, uh, so, due to the recount, we need to have three. We reached out to Molly Conlin, and of course, no hesitation, she agreed, and so, she's coming back on to, for this purpose only.
Great, and I appreciate Molly for stepping up. Uh, I know Molly has, um, nerves of steel, and she'll, she'll persevere through this. So, thank you, Molly, for, um, for temporarily coming back. Any other, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none?
Uh, right.
Mark Cullen and I.
Uh, I think you have this, the, uh, poll boards?
No, we're skipping that to the next, next meeting, Josh. Um, let's see. The next, uh, item is under tab three H, a vote to approve the waste management contract. Do I have a motion?
And also, the worst, the next week is all waste and recyclable material collection and transportation, um, on the, uh, on the, uh, the, uh, and July first, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We'll start with you, Tony, first.
Yes. Um, so, the town in Nahat's, uh, contract with waste management is, and by the way, Dan Scrip here has been part of these conversations as well, uh, Town Council. So, the town Nahat's contract has, comes due yesterday, six thirty. Uh, there was a, an option to extend, um, but both parties set to mutually agree, and waste management, um, wanted to renegotiate. And a lot of that is because over the last three to four to five years, the industry has completely changed. Um, China, which is, which was the number one consumer of these, of waste and recyclable materials, who was at the time actually, um, buying the materials from us, changed their, um, standards of quality of material, and now, it actually costs money to recycle these materials. Before, it was, um, you know, the industry was making money off of recycling these materials. So, the whole industry got tipped on its head. Many businesses went, went out of service. So, over the last year or so, Waste Management has come to us, actually, my first, probably two weeks on the job, Waste Management came and said they wanted to renegotiate the deal immediately, and I said, "No, we'll, we'll hold off here. I just started, last week. Let's, um, come to me when we get to the end of the, when we get in the last six months or the last year of the, of the contract." So, they did. And we've been talking about this for probably about six months now. We have, um, some automated barrels here in the Town Hall that we've had on display. Uh, Waste Management came to a Board of Selectmen meeting. Ed Pacek from Waste Management came to a Board of Selectmen meeting and did a PowerPoint presentation on the issues that the industry is facing, and the increase in cost and, in handling waste. Uh, we also, um, published that onto our website, put it on Facebook, and there was even an article, um, in the Lynn item about sometime in March, I believe, discussing this issue. So, Waste Management presented to us a couple different options. One was, if we don't change anything with how we currently handle our trash in this town, reflective of the new costs of waste, what that would cost us. Then, if we changed how we handle the town's waste, as in town public buildings and the dumpsters that we have, we could save ten thousand dollars there. If we just simply changed our dumpsters to front-load dumpsters, we did that right away. So, we've already changed that to save about ten thousand dollars. Then, we have the option to go to automated collection, where the truck pulls up, and it has a robot arm that sticks out, grabs your, um, uniform barrel, and tips it into the truck. There's a lot of cost savings involved in that, because now, they only have one person driving into town one day a week, versus now, we have two people, um, on one truck, and they come twice a week. Uh, so, we knew going into this process that we were looking at significant increases in costs, and we were trying to explore alternative methods that would somehow decrease that or limit that increase. However, changing how we handle our trash, um, all households in the community is a significant policy decision that I felt needs some public process. And right when we were teeing it up, I, once again, coronavirus hit, and really through our ability to do a legitimate public process about going to automated, uh, collection or doing uniform barrels, um, so, we need a new contract in order to continue service in town. Again, Waste Management was looking to, uh, do a five-year contract with us, and we pushed back and said, "We'd like to just do a one-year contract, leaving our current system the way it is, making a couple tweaks to the contract, um, and then explore over the next year our alternative options for cost savings." We do get a lot of complaints, I would say, from, in town about missed trash, about messy streets and trash coming out of the, the trucks. Many times, the reason trash isn't picked up is because, uh, the items in the recycling container are not allowed to be recycled. And what we, what I worked on with them in this current contract is, uh, Waste Management has these stickers here, so, if somebody puts out materials that aren't supposed to be in the recycling, they will put a sticker on that trash, on that trash barrel, so that people know why their trash wasn't picked up. And they will report that, at the end of their route, they'll report that to the Town Hall, so we know which houses weren't collected for what reason. Um, and the reason that is, is because we get audited, um, randomly throughout the year by the company, our trash gets audited, when they bring it to the, to the distribution center. And if there's a lot of contaminants in it, we get penalized for that. So, the idea is to get people, is to educate people on what you can and can't put in recycling, uh, by, you know, showing them, stating on this sticker that you put, you know, something that wasn't supposed to be recycled in your recycling, that's why it didn't get picked up. There are many times where, um, we have construction, or trash is behind a car, for what, for whatever reason, there, sometimes things do get missed. We actually, I asked them to pull the success rate from last year, and ninety-one reported misses last year out of a hundred and thirty-six thousand homes. So, their success rate was in the upper ninety percent. So, while we do seem to hear a lot, there's a lot that goes perfectly smooth. And as you and I were talking earlier, I think that's something that you're probably gonna experience, those types of things, with any hauling company that you have. The benefit of Waste Management is that they are the hauler, and they are also the distributor, you know, so they, instead of us having, um, you know, a, another hauler company that then has to sell their trash to Waste Management, we're going right to that, to that main company there. I'll also say that in two thousand fifteen, when the town in Nahat put this out to procurement, which isn't required, uh, under thirty B, but we put it out to procurement, the second closest bid is more expensive than this one-year contract that we're agreeing to. So, five years later, we're still agreeing, we're still cheaper than the closest contract that was in that procurement process five years ago. And so, we are looking at a significant increase, though, and I, and I do, I wanna be clear about it, because I'd wanna spike the communicate, the conversation for the next year about things that we can consider. So, this contract features basically a sixteen percent increase total. If we were to go to automated collection with uniform barrels, and if we were to lease those from Waste Management, those barrels, we'd be looking at a six-point-four-seven percent increase, so much less of an increase. If we were to purchase the barrels ourselves, which we actually have some funds in the retained earnings under that enterprise account, plus utilize DEP grants to, uh, get more cost savings on the barrels, we'd actually look at a one and a half percent decrease in total So, there's other benefits to do an automated collection, uniform barrel, um, they're heavy-duty, strong lids. Unfortunately, I will say that every trash day, Thursday and Friday, driving through the town, we are a windy community, being on the water, so it's not, it's not, um, unusual to see trash along the streets. And being on the ocean, I think, you know, we are very, an environmentally, um, sensitive community. I think it's something that people would be interested in looking at.
Do they give, do they give you any, um, statistics on what other communities use? A level of service?
I reached out to DEP's Northeast Coordinator that works on, um, this, this part of their, uh, DEP's field, I guess, their, uh, Solid Waste and Recycling Division, and asked them what other communities are getting, uh, rates per ton, and this is pretty competitive, this, um, the, the tonnage. What's killing, or what's adding to our increase in cost is the labor, too, because we have unlimited, um, unlimited amounts of trash, and therefore, high tonnage wait, rates. And, you know, there, there was, I did, yeah, I heard something like, um, eighty percent of your trash is recyclable, recyclable, while most people only recycle about like twenty percent. So, there's a lot of material that could come out of the waste stream and into the recycling stream, which is cheaper to get rid of than trash.
What I, what I was asking is, of the three options we have, do most communities go with the auto feed?
Um, a lot of the, our neighboring communities have uniform barrels. Salem, um, Swamp Scott's looking to go to, uh, thirty-five gallon. It's not a uniform, it's a uniform, uh, amount, but it's not, you know, they're not all the green barrels. You can have any thirty-five gallon. Lynn has the uniform barrels, and it's all automated. So, yeah, a lot of communities go to automated, because there's a significant cost savings there, and it presents better on trash day for the community, and like I said, it's a good, it's an environmental benefit. But, the first year or two of that change is tough on people, because you're now going to a limit. Uh, you're incentivizing putting stuff more, you know, into the recycling bin, and that's change, so it's, it's tough for people to adjust. Eventually, people start to get the hang of it, and, and there's a lot of benefits to it, so, um...
Are the barrels limited? The number of barrels per household?
That's up to the community. We can, um, typically, what you'll do is, you'll see, so you see these barrels over here? So, you have a ninety-six gallon barrel, that's for recycling, that gets picked up every other week. And then, you have a sixty-five gallon barrel, a smaller barrel, for trash, that gets picked up every week. You can allow for residents to purchase a second trash barrel, if you'd like. Uh, some communities, like in Swamp Scott, they don't allow you to. What they do is, uh, pay as you throw bag. So, if you have more waste that can fit in that barrel, you have to put it in a special trash bag that you can buy at the local store for, you know, three bucks a bag or so, um, 'cause it's typically only on occasion that you need it. Uh, so, it's up, those, those are different elements, those are kinda different options you can include in, in the next policy. But, as for this, what we're voting on tonight, we are not changing any of that. What we're voting on tonight is essentially an extension of our current style of service at a new rate.
And the new rate is from three forty-five to?
To about, so, yes, so, our per-household trash rate, from dating back to fiscal year eleven, all the way up until fiscal year thirteen. So, fiscal year eleven, fiscal year twelve, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and previous, it was per person, per house that you were getting charged. So, if you had one person, you got to charge a certain amount. If you had six people, you got to charge a higher amount. Um, what we found were, um, that a lot of residents were not telling the truth about how many people were in their home, so that they could get a lower rate, and thus, the town wouldn't collect enough money to pay the fee, the, the, the assessment charge. So, the town, plus administratively, it's very difficult to have different rates, you know, throughout the town. So, the town changed the policy and set a flat rate for every household. Every household gets charged the same rate. And since two thousand and fifteen, that flat rate has been three hundred and forty-five dollars. So, for the last six years, five years, I'm sorry, for the last five years, it's been steady at three forty-five. This, this rate, if we, um, go to this total one-year contract, divided by thirteen thousand, thirteen hundred households, would increase that three forty-five to three ninety-five. So, again, about a sixteen percent increase. Um, there are, there is additional, um, considerations that we can take. Uh, right now, our, um, these are charged per parcel, so there are, um, some parcels in town that have multifamily, that only get charged one, uh, one parcel, per parcel. So, we have started to look at, um, charging the trash rate per unit instead of per parcel. So, that thirteen hundred households ends up becoming fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred?
About thirteen hundred and forty-five, somewhere in that area.
So, it adds about another fifty?
There were some residential units that actually had five households in it, but were only being charged one flat rate. So, we're trying to make that fairer for everyone in town, such that per household, as you mentioned, is what the, um, the parameter's gonna be going forward.
So, again, we're not voting on that tonight. That's another option to help soften this increase per ratepayer, is to potentially consider, consider going per unit instead of per parcel, which would distribute that total cost of the contract amongst, you know, more people, thus bringing the per-person rate down. Uh, so, we're exploring everything we can to try to, to try to limit the burden, the additional burden on, on folks here in town.
Thank you, Tony. Josh, do you have any comments?
Uh, just, uh, looking forward to, uh, looking forward next year, and, uh, some , um, proactive, um, selected, uh, uh, best needs, uh, uh, residents.
Okay, great. Um, I, I have a similar comment. I mean, I, I'm going to vote to, um, to support this, um, extension for one year, primarily so that the town administrator can seek more public, um, input on this, um, also work with Town Council, and looking at that other option of, um, charging per unit rather than per parcel. I think that could drop it significantly. And I know that's a, kind of a minefield of, uh, um, thing to do, but I think that ob, obviously needs to be looked at. Um, and the other options, in terms of the, the types of containers we're using, and if the town really wants to do something along those lines. As you mentioned, this is the first increase in over five years, um, in our rubbish rates. Um, and I think that sometimes people forget, this is, this rate, this one, this, um, annual rate is not just for curbside pickup. This, um, annual, uh, cost includes all of the beach, all of the barrels at our parks in recreational areas, uh, beaches, uh, it includes the cost for the compost area, and leaf collection, and, and, um, yard waste. So, there's more to it than just curbside collection. So, there's more to it than just curbside collection. And as Tony mentioned, when I was sitting in his seat, we, we did have it based on per person, it was a disaster. People were dropping, the town was losing, losing its population because of people dropping off the census list. So, we changed it to per parcel. Couple, another reason I, I, I don't think it's good to change at this point, bringing in another hauler. There's, because I've worked with several haulers over the years, over the past twenty years in the town. And as Tony said, you're gonna have problems, no matter who you have. Hopefully, we can limit those issues and work with the hauler, but there has not been a hauler in this community over the past twenty years that has had a perfect record. And I doubt we'll ever get that. All we can do is try to hold their feet to the fire and make sure they do their job. You know, Waste Management is probably one of the largest haulers in the country. So, I mean, they are very competitive and it's, it's hard for other haulers to sort of beat their price also. And you, you indicated that, that back five years ago, this would still be the, this increase this year would be still the lowest of the, that is, five years ago.
Capital. Capital was the closest five years ago, and JRM was way, way significantly higher.
And the other issue that you have with a new hauler when they come into town is, there's a learning curve. It takes several months for that new hauler to learn the streets of the town. And some of these streets are very difficult to maneuver those large trucks. You get in areas in Nahant and over in Bass Point areas, where it takes time to figure out how to get those trucks down, down those, down the streets and some of the lanes. So, I can, I can attest to some of the issues that new haulers who came into this town had the first two or three months. So, I look forward over the next year of working with you and the town to try to see what the town really wants. And I think this is a, this is a good way to start that. I think, Tony, there were a lot of people that were probably concerned about this, and I have nothing more to say, but before we take a vote on this, maybe we should listen to, if anybody in, in the public has any comments on this before we vote on it, I'd certainly like to hear that.
Could I add one more thing to that?
Yes.
And that is simply, they are so big, they turn their equipment all the time. Every time I look down the street, there's a new truck or, or strong equipment coming up. So, that averts any kind of a breakdown, and breakdowns mean no trash pickup. And that some of these secondary companies, those trucks don't look like they're gonna make the hill. So, that's something to consider.
We have, it's funny you bring that up, because that was some, that was part of our negotiation. And we actually put in language in there that, you know, the trucks that they use can't be more than X amount of years old. I, it's all less than, I think, seven, seven or younger.
You can see it.
We also added language in there, or modified existing language in there, that if someone gets missed, if, if your trash gets missed, and it's not because you had the wrong thing in the trash, but because for some reason it was there, you report that to Waste Management. If, so it says in the contract now, if they are still here on the island, they have to come back and pick it up same day. If they've already left the island, they have to pick it up the next business day. So, we get picked up on Thursday and Friday. So, for folks on Thursday, they'll come and get it on Friday. They have to by the contract. For folks on Friday, you have to wait until Monday. But, typically when that happens, which is, it's once in a while, DPW will, will come down and grab it. Or, you know, we have the dumpster down behind DPW that, if you're in a pinch or if you have a, you know, a smelly barrel and you really want to get rid of it, we have the, we have the dumpsters back there for a backstop, you know, a safety net. But, worst case scenario, you don't have to wait until the next week. Just report it, pull it back in, and they will make a trip out here on Monday to pick it up. Let me see, if, if there are anybody, anybody in the, on Zoom has a comment or a question about this topic, please unmute yourself and speak now, before the vote.
In the meantime, I'll just add the sticker, and the tracking of those stickers. Uh, I assume, uh, the, 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 uh, the anti, you know, it also, it.
I don't have anything in the chat.
Okay, great. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? Jean Harry Nunn, we have a roll call vote?
Judge, your line.
Jean Cante, aye.
Mark Cullen, an aye. Okay, under three, aye, vote to approve the FY twenty-one fees. Jean, did you make a motion?
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the fiscal year twenty-one master fees list.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion?
Now that, now that I've approved it, what is it?
Tony, why don't we turn it over to you first?
Yeah, so this is our, this is our fee schedule, schedule that we, that we vote on each year. It lays out all the fees that we can charge as a community. Without an active approved voting fee scheduled, then the, you know, we can't technically continue to charge. So, we have to vote on this before the new fiscal year, so that we have that legal backing to write those fees. So, this year, there are, what you're voting on right now is the same fee schedule that was presented last year. No new fees, no, no changes to any fees. We want, you know, there's been some thoughts about taking a closer look at what other communities charge for certain things. Mooring fees, boat storage fees, you know, golf fees, parking tickets, anything you can think of, right? Moorings, yeah, right. So, you know, ours have always been very low. And I think that's a, I don't think we have any desire to change that significantly. And certainly not without doing a public process again, and taking a look at what other communities do. And mostly, importantly, not this year, especially with coronavirus. It's a troubling year for everybody fiscally. So, we are just voting the same fees as we had last year, and maybe over the next year or so, we will take a look at changes to consider. For me, I think that we do need to take a look at our parking ticket fees. DCR increased their out-of-state fee for parking at the causeway to forty dollars. And I think our parking ticket is thirty-five. So, you know, for anybody that's out of state, it makes more sense to come and park in Nahant instead of pay the, the extra five bucks and park on the causeway. So, those are things, and those haven't been increased for years. So, you know, there's things like that that we can consider. Our water sewer rates, our trash rates, you know, that, our trash rates may change with, with the contract we just approved. So, any changes like that, we will do as we go and we'll present them, present them. If it's, if, if it's due to a contract change or due to a sewer rate change, you know, those are things that happen regularly throughout the year. Anyways, if it's something like a parking ticket or a mooring fee or, you know, something that really calls for a public process, we'll hold off.
Thank you, Tony. Josh, any comments? I have no comments. So, motions are made and seconded? No further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Judge, your line.
Jean Cante, aye.
Mark Cullen, an aye. The last item on new business is under tab three J, Planning Board and Board of Assessors, open seats. And I'll turn this over to town council?
Yeah, I can fill in as well. There really is a motion on, on this item. And we're gonna skip over Planning Board for the moment. I'm waiting to hear back from the chair, from the chairman there. Obviously, with Jean being a former member of the Planning Board and now being a member of the Selectmen, we expect a vacancy there. But I want to run these dates by the chairman before we put them out there. I did check with the, with the assessor, and she checked with her board. I'll let Dan explain what we're gonna, why we have to do what we're doing. And then I'll, I'll announce the dates afterwards.
Yeah, to be quite frank, there was an oversight in issuing the ballot for this year's elections a week and a half ago, and that oversight took the form of omitting a seat for the assessors, which is a revolving seat every year. So, the best cure we came up with was engaging in the process of appointing a vacancy, which is to say, the Selectmen and the remaining Board of the Assessors are able to appoint that new person just for the remainder of this year, which in this case, given COVID, is only ten months. And then next year, there'll be two seats open for the assessors, the Board of Assessors.
Great. There's no vote on this, and I look forward to working with the Planning Board and the Board of Assessors and making these appointments.
So, section three thirteen of the Nahant Town Charter states that when an elected position goes vacant, it's a vote of the Board of Selectmen to appoint someone to fill that seat until the date of the election, the next upcoming election. And then that upcoming election is to fill the remaining term of the seat that went vacant. So, same thing happened, actually, with Carol Nelson, who filled the interim clerk role. A little bit different here, when you have that vacant seat of a sitting board, it's not just a vote of the Board of Selectmen. It includes, it's a joint vote of the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of that board. So, what we will have to do is have a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors, where anybody that's interested will put their name forward, and then both boards will vote publicly on who they're gonna appoint. So, what we've put out there is that if anybody's interested in serving as, as an assessor on the Board of Assessors, please submit your interest, a cover letter and a resume to the members of the Board of Assessors, to the members of the Board of Selectmen, and include Bobby Joe Blair at B Blair at Nahant.org, the Board of Selectmen's administrative assistant, in that email. And we'll compile those. Please submit those by five o'clock on Monday, July twentieth. So, a cover letter and a resume by Monday, July twentieth at five P M. We'll put this on the website as well. And then we will have a joint meeting on Wednesday, August fifth, with the Board of Assessors, and we'll vote to fill that seat.
Sounds good. Look forward to it. Okay, that ends our new business. We'll go on to ongoing business under tab four. I don't see anything, but I do have a, a couple of comments on this based on our last week's meeting. I know during our last week's meeting, Josh, you had, you told us that you were working on a, a draft financial impact analysis on Northeastern's expansion. And we asked the town, for you to pass that along to the town administrator, and for the town administrator to send that to the other members of the board. I did receive a copy of it, and I believe, Jean, you received a copy. First, I want to say, I was very impressed at the scope and depth of that report. Obviously, a lot of work went into that. I have a few comments that I can, I can pass on. I consider this a, a draft report at this point. But again, I think the work that you put into this is, is significant, and I think it helps answer a lot of questions that some people in town may have. And this is just, as you know, one of the first reports that, that the town will be submitting, and KP Larv is working on an independent analysis of their own. So, that will be coming soon also. So, what I would like to do, at least tonight, is to accept the draft and to have, Tony, if you could post this draft statement or report on the town's website, we could readdress this at our next meeting and to approve it, if we need to.
And I, and I sent it over to our webmaster and asked him to put it under the Northeastern Expansion tab. So, if you go to the Nahant.org website homepage, and on the right side, click on New Expansion Project, that's where we keep all of our documents of the board or town documents related to the expansion project. So, the link to this draft document is there. If people want to take a look at it, submit comments to the Board of Selectmen.
Should I make a motion to accept it? I don't need to just post it then? Okay. And we'll, we'll address this at the next meeting. And I think the public will have an opportunity to go on the website and take a look at it, and we can take some comments during the citizens forum at our next meeting.
Hey, Josh, if I could parrot what Mark just said. Fantastic job on that report. And I think clearly, when people see that, that first section, maybe the first seven or eight pages, they'll have a clear understanding of what this is all about and the direction we're going. It's really tremendous. Lot of work.
Okay. Town administrator's report.
So, you know, I spent a lot of this last week preparing for the new business stuff, so I don't have, I don't have a ton to, ton to report. However, one thing that I did miss, another thing I missed to put on this agenda is the appointment of our town treasurer. So, our town charter calls for our town treasurer to be appointed annually. However, I believe the Muni Modernization Act allows us to enter into a contract with the treasurer. Something that I'm gonna take a look at, but because we don't have a contract right now with him, but he's doing an excellent job, would it be okay, council, for me to ask the board to approve one, you know, another one-year appointment for our, our existing town treasurer, even though it wasn't on the agenda?
I can, we can wait a week. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be, it's not like a, he's.
Well, if you'd like, I mean, Dan, I believe there is a, there is legislation that's relatively new that will allow the board, allow the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract with it, with the treasurer. So, maybe you could look at that, and maybe if you, I mean, we could do either or. If you want to put a contract together, we could take a look at that and extend it beyond a year. Or if we can only do a year, then that's what we'll do, but.
We should wait until next meeting.
We should wait till, you could look into that, though?
Sure.
Great.
We, John Coulon is, is on, is on the Zoom account if we want to discuss anything related to coronavirus. I think since our last meeting, the governor announced part two of Phase Two reopening, which allows for some indoor seating at restaurants. John, are you, are you on, are you still on, John?
I am.
Do you want to discuss anything related to COVID reopening?
Uh, I would say that I appreciate the inquiries coming to me from various characters looking to find a manual on summer programs adapted for, and normal, as well as continuing cooperation from our private establishments. But I've learned that, uh, run phase six was, we've avoided zero deaths in Massachusetts. The first time since we started, uh, training this, this pandemic in Massachusetts, uh, was March twenty. So, although, uh, Nahant is, uh, small, is still, uh, a, a member of the state, obviously. And, uh, we are, uh, experiencing similar ups and downs, uh, as, as is the state. And, uh, looking across the country, and what is happening to folks, and as hard as it has been for all of us, And looking across the country, and what is happening to folks in the entire city, hasn't been for all of us in town and across Massachusetts. We're seeing the results, taking this thing seriously. And when I'm looking at how folks are, are conducting themselves, I like to ask the question, are we looking for progression or progress others? What we see is better than no masks, no distancing, and this ranks true in the numbers and data. As the governor stated, students will be made based on the data. And the data is very beautiful, and we are seeing benefits of adhering to both the scientists and the public health experts that Governor Baker has solicited and listed, and not regret to folks in business, in citizens, in folks in various groups, how they have been taking this seriously, reaching out and asking for guidance and town approval. And there's an event to be had. So I think that if we continue this progression, although it is new and it's a bother, we should, I thought.
Thank you, John. I agree. Please bring your mask with you when you go outside and wear it if you can't maintain social distance. And I thank you, John and Deb, for all the work that you've done. And I'm thankful for Governor Baker, because I think he's doing a terrific job also on this.
And next, at the next Board of Select meeting, I'd be happy to present, you know, how much, how much the town has spent on coronavirus-related items and services, and how much of that we are applying for the CARES Act and for FEMA reimbursement. We're in the process of going through that now, so hopefully I'll have those numbers presented.
I look forward to that. Great. Is that it, Tony?
That's all.
Okay. Item six is Citizens Forum. Do we have anything, Tony? Oh, we got one. Sharon?
Here's Sharon. Oh, yeah, you can use that microphone there. Yep.
Thank you very much. Sharon Hawks from Nahat Public Library. I wanted to inform the public about the library's Phase Two reopening. We've been open for a month now doing curbside pickup and delivery on request, but we're gearing up now for a limited reopening by appointment beginning this Tuesday, July seventh. The way this works, a maximum of five people will be able to come in for fifty minutes on the hour, Tuesday through Friday, ten to five. Email us or call us at the library to schedule. Appointments can be made one week in advance, meaning you could call during business hours this week in order to schedule for July seventh through tenth, and then next week for the following week and so forth. One computer, one laptop will be made available on request. We request that everyone wear a mask in compliance with the governor's emergency order and for our staff's safety, and maintain physical distancing from those not of your household. Hand sanitizer will be available all over the place. No food or drink allowed, and the bathroom will not be available. Toys and games will also be unavailable at this time. Pickup or delivery of Nahat library's books, CDs and DVDs will still continue because it's, it's working. It's been successful, and I'm very grateful to our staff, to Carolyn and Olivia, for making that work. No libraries have interlibrary loaning of materials at this time, so it's only our materials that are going out. We are sorry for all these restrictions, but we hope it allows some of you back in the beautiful building and to search for the books that you need. Meanwhile, this is week two of our summer reading program with forty children registered. This week is our Horribles Photo Fest. Because the Horribles Parade was canceled this year, we thought we might bring families the chance to participate virtually. So we sent masks to the families that are registered in summer reading, but anyone can play. Dress up or mask up, not this kind of mask, and then send us photos of your family in your Horribles vest. Try not to scare us too much. We'll gather the photos in one big slideshow on Friday, July third, on Facebook. So please like us on Facebook, because a lot of the things we're talking about from week to week are, are being discussed there. As in all our programs, children are not identified by name when we post them on social media for their safety and the family's privacy. So if you see someone you know when we post these, please don't mention them by name. We will ask you to withdraw that comment, and see you at Horribles Photo Fest online. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, and I, I do want to compliment you and your staff for all of the work that you've been doing during COVID. I know that you go the extra mile in reaching out and engaging the public in creative ways, like the Horribles Parade type thing, but you've been doing that for the last several months, and I really appreciate your effort and your staff.
Hey, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We've also, oh, we've also got a little garden going on, so if anybody wants some herbs, give us an email, and we'll tell you what's, what's cooking at the moment. Thanks so much.
Do we have any other comments? Yes.
Anybody else on Zoom, if you have a comment, you can submit it to the chat group, or you can unmute yourself now. There's nothing in the chat.
Okay, well, great. Well, thanks. Thanks.
Do we have a Selectmen's Forum?
Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one question?
One second.
Just a quick question, something I noticed. I know that you've talked about this in the past. Why don't we have crosswalks down on Nahat Road and Little Nahat Road going over to Doggy Beach?
So this is...
I saw an incident today where a woman was waiting with her dog to try to, just impossible for her.
So this is a request that has become popular over the last year or two. We've had a couple incidents down there. And I, and we even received a petition from the neighborhood there, looking, trying to get into it. The issue there is, it's a couple issues. One is, we're unsure if, if engineer, you know, if we did a traffic study, which I believe we would need to do in order to put a crosswalk in on a main thoroughfare like that, if the sightlines and the speeds that go through that area are enough that people could safely cross on a crosswalk. Two is, the other side of the road, there is no sidewalk. It's actually a, an active dune. So it's, it's a little bit more complicated than just painting, you know, a crosswalk on the ground. What we've talked about is doing a traffic study to see if we could, if, you know, engineers could come in and take a look and do that data for us and decide where it should go in a safe manner. But we didn't have that budgeted in last year's budget. So we were hoping to do it in this year's budget, and then town meeting got postponed to September. So hopefully after September, we can hire a company to come in and take a look at that. There's a couple areas that we want them to come and take a look at is crosswalk at Little Nahat Playground. A little bit further up where Little Nahat Road comes across and maybe having a staircase come down on the other side. Up by the pharmacy on Castle Road, right when you take the right, again, it's, cars come in pretty quickly there, and it's somewhat blind, and that's where people cross there. So improving the sightlines there and the safety of that crossing. And then Bass Point intersection at the, after you get through the school, when you can go left to Tri-Mount Road or right to Gardner. You know, there's, it's very tricky for cars there as well. So there are a couple areas in town that we wanted to hire a company to come in and do a study on it.
Just thinking, looking at, you know, that twenty-five mile an hour limit everywhere, it doesn't seem that it would be impractical to put crosswalks there. But that's just, it's just, nobody else, just my opinion.
If everybody did twenty-five, ideally, yes. But a lot of the incidents that we've had there haven't, haven't really even been speed-related. They've been people on their phone texting and driving, not looking, and you have dogs. You know, we had an incident where a dog got off a leash, sad, got off the leash, and unfortunately was hit. And the driver wasn't going that fast, but wasn't paying attention. And we've had people, close calls, getting across the road.
Crosswalk would certainly slow them down.
Using...
You know it's coming.
Yeah. Some yes, some no. You know, it's, it's a tricky, you're getting into a tricky, tricky situation there when you're using a crosswalk to slow cars down. You know, you're, you're putting people in harm's way so that people slow down. And if someone's not looking where they're driving, it doesn't matter whether they're, you know, someone's in the road or not. So the key piece there is the sightlines, and if you're going to put a crosswalk there, what type of signage, flashing? You know, maybe you have a flashing sign further up, you know, when you're coming off the causeway halfway there, that someone hits the crosswalk button up, up ahead, that it's giving them a signal, slow down, there's a crosswalk up ahead. There's different types of technologies to look at to help, but it's not, it's not as simple as just...
We don't have, have any traffic signals in town that I'm aware of, and yet we have a number of crosswalks.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you're not, you're...
I just, I just wanted to bring it up.
I know Tony, Tony and I had a discussion about this this afternoon, and I, I agree that this does require a professional to come in and take a look at this. There were a number of areas that you mentioned. I think you're showing your age when you refer to the pharmacy. And people are probably watching at home and saying, the pharmacy is a pharmacy or not.
That just comes out, yeah.
But in any event, I do think, you know, if, if it wasn't for COVID, I'm sure that this study would have already started. Hopefully, we can get it through at town meeting. I would also add to that, Tony, having a sign audit in the town to take a look at all of our signage and to come up with something that's a little bit more comprehensive and straightforward and not as confusing, but thanks.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn, Josh?
Motion to adjourn?
Go ahead, Jean.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Josh, seconded by Jean to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing none. All in favor?
Jean Cante, aye.
Mark Cullen, an aye. Good night.